I'd like to call to order the town council regular session to order at 7:45. The date is Monday, May 9th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands our nation in its accord with the great justice of law.
Our apologies for starting late. Sue, could we please have the roll call?
Council President Whaley.
Here.
Council Vice President Mackenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty.
Here.
Councilor Eddie.
Here.
Councilor O'Neill.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. And if we can all make sure that we speak into our microphones, I know I've been doing the rewatches and sometimes members are not heard. So with that, we have the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. We have the work session April 18th and April 25th.
I move approval of those work sessions minutes.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. We also have the regular session from April 25th, 2011.
I move approval of the regular session April 25th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Would any town council person like anything removed from the consent agenda? With that said, do we have a motion?
We should approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Tonight, we have licenses. We have a resolution granting a Victorling license to Morgan LLC doing business as Patty Cakes, 542 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and Communications Superintendent. Application by Douglas Alley, 989B, Morsefield Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. This is a new license. Do we have Douglas Alley here? If you could please come to the microphone. Welcome. If you could tell us a little bit about your business. We have the cameras running and this is great advertisement.
Morgan LLC really is Patty Cakes. It's actually a kind of an urban chic style cupcakery. They're very popular now or becoming more popular on the East Coast, especially in New York. They've moved from the West Coast from six years ago. You have five successful ones now doing business in Providence. We don't really have one here in South Kingstown. My wife and I recently moved back a couple of years ago. We had a successful catering and event design company in Florida for 15 years and chose and had to move back because of family reasons. My wife's from Rhode Island. So now we have kind of assessed the area and feel that with our previous background and what we did. And the opportunity is here to open a cupcakery. It'll also be doing wedding cakes because the event design part of our company, my wife is conducting in Newport. And so it'll be a cross promotion between the two and really sister companies because Patty Cakes will do wedding cakes for Fancy Tomato in Newport and support the brides and so forth, as well as South County. So.
Very nice.
Okay.
Do we have questions here at the table? Jim?
What makes these so special? I certainly know of, I've read some headlines, but what makes these so popular right now? What are the ingredients? Don't give me any secret recipes.
I think one of the reasons really why they have become more successful is because it's kind of a little sinful indulgence without really being too much. But I think really more so is because of the economy is that someone is much more willing to walk in and spend $2, $2.50 for a cupcake as opposed to several years back going in and spending $5 or $6 for dessert or same as, you know, $5 or $6 for Starbucks. So I think it's kind of a combination of both. They're unique. They kind of throw people back to their childhood. Kids still love to go in and get a cupcake. The cupcakes are not your typical cupcakes. For example, I mean, some of our cupcakes, one which is very unique will be what's called a dessert cupcake. It's actually a buttermilk blueberry cupcake with maple syrup buttercream with actual apple with smoked bacon dipped in chocolate on top of it. So it's not your typical cupcakes, you know?
So it's the theme on that frosting. It's the design.
Exactly. It's very unique cupcakes. It's like, I mean, of course you'll have traditional red velvet. Being in the South for the last 18 years, a hidden surprise with the red velvet, you always find a fresh raspberry at the bottom. So it's not your typical cupcake you see at your PTO meetings. There's nothing wrong with those cupcakes, but you know, that's the reason why you can justify spending $2 to $3 a cupcake, you know?
Sample is with you this evening.
I didn't bring any, sorry. But you're welcome to come and get a free one when we open.
Polly? When will you be opening?
Right now, we're hoping to be open either on the 18th or the 20th of this month as a soft opening. That's our projection. Because the space originally was the Brick Mill Dessert Cafe. So that was one of the reasons why we chose it was because it was very easy to turn it over in a short amount of time. Really, all we have had to go in is do cosmetics, is, you know, freshen up, new paint, new light fixtures. There really wasn't any structural needs. It was already had grease straps there. It already had existing equipment. It already had the electrical outlets of three amps and one amps. So that really made it a very good spot to quickly turn it around and not have to deal with a lot of issues of taking a blank slate and producing something from it.
And will you have just cupcakes? And you do wedding cakes. You will not have ice cream like they did?
No, we're not doing ice cream. We're trying to stay very focused on the factor of wedding cakes and cupcakes. I mean, we'll deviate a little bit here and there. For example, that would be a byproduct of a cupcake. For example, like whoopee pies is basically the same thing you make a cupcake from. So we'll do whoopee pies, things like that. But we're not getting involved with, you know, ice cream and multiple shakes and smoothies and all that. We're trying to keep it very clean, simple. You walk in, you're inundated with all of these beautiful things, choose them and take them home and walk out. Because we really don't want to get involved with it being a seated type of environment because that's really not the type of ambiance of this type of places. You walk in, you make an impulse purchase and basically you walk out and then you feel guilty after you do it, so.
And what are your hours going to be?
Monday through Saturday and basically it'll be from 10 to 6 and close on Sundays. You're welcome.
Further questions here at the table? Sounds wonderful.
I propose to approve new business license A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. And we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much. We're excited.
Which brings us to the public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the town code, Chapter 4, Boats and Waterways Ordinance that would bring it into conformance with the harbor management plan update and Coastal Resources Management Council guideline and regulations as shown on Exhibit 1 attached here, too. At this point, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Nada.
Hello. I would say that the cupcakes is very difficult to follow for this discussion. Hopefully, we'll liven it up a little bit.
Very sweet, Andy.
Thank you. I opened myself up to that one. Before I get started, I would like to note that we do have our harbor master with us tonight, Barry Anis. Barry's here for technical support, any other historical support as we work our way through the proposed ordinances that you have before you tonight for the town's boats and waterways ordinance. Before I begin, I would want to just read a brief introduction to give a little background to the regulatory governance the town has relative to local waters. It's actually clarified under General Law's Title 46, Section 4, under harbors and harbor lines. It enables the coastal municipalities with certain powers regarding the regulation of public waters within their jurisdiction so as to ensure orderly development and management of harbor areas. These powers include management of vessel operations within harbors, management of anchorages and moorings, and regulation of activities included water skiing, skin diving, et cetera. Specifically, cities and towns have authority to enact through ordinance and an appointed harbor master rules and regulations to control activities on or in the waters under their jurisdiction. The town council approved the town's harbor management plan recently dating back to the September 2011 plan at a public hearing held on February 28th, 2011. Section 6 of that plan update focusing on issues, goals, policies, and recommended actions includes additional policies and actions that require the appropriate regulatory document, which is our local boats and waterways ordinance, to be amended. CRMC approval of the harbor management plan update will include the contingency that applicable proposed amendments be incorporated into the boats and ways ordinances as we move forward. Staff has drafted a series of recommendations, most of which are required recommendations through the CRMC review and through the planning update process. The proposed changes have also been reviewed by CRMC council staff and determined to be in conformance with the CRMC regulations, guidelines, and/or policies. We have a short series of regulatory proposals for change in the boats and waterways ordinance. Just going to slowly work through each of them. The first two are more focused on just language changes. The first is just a table of contents language change adding Section 4-37, which includes outhauls in South Kingstown tidal waters. The second such language change is under Section 4-1.4, and that's just to acknowledge the fact that the comp plan has been amended since its initial 1992 adoption. Now we move into the more substantive recommended changes. Under Section 4-5.3, and actually, we have the map just behind the town manager here, which depicts a proposed increase in the no wake and five mile an hour zone in an area that is just south of Snug Harbor and north of the DEM testing facility, which is to the west. The recommended change, and it's a limited change of approximately 400 feet due to the fact that the property line of South Kingstown and Narragansett actually bisected this particular area. The entire area, and I believe you have an eight and a half by 11 map that was provided, on the larger map, it's indicated with the yellow insignia which actually shows where the seasonal placement of five mile an hour markers are located. Those markers are taken out in the off season and they put back in. So they're in those approximate locations. So this request would be to increase that five mile an hour no wake zone by approximately 400 feet. What it would take to increase it fully, the additional 800 feet, would be under the responsibility of the Harbor Management Commission and the Town Council in the town of Narragansett. We have been, the waterfront advisory board with the harbor master has vetted this process out over many months. We've actually had the harbor master in Narragansett as well as members of their Harbor Management Commission attend several meetings. And due to a number of reasons, really all focused on public safety, it appears that both communities are very supportive of this additional restriction. It is really one of two remaining areas in the entire Point Judith Pond area that you're allowed to exceed that five mile an hour no wake limit. The one remaining area would be pretty much from the Billington Cove area just north of, to just north of Camp Fuller. And that's an area where if anybody's a boater, you would see many people water skiing and wakeboarding and just kind of moving quickly, either heading out, heading out of the pond or back in at the end of the day. So that's Section 4.5.3. The exact language would read that the existing no wake zone will be extended southerly an additional 400 feet to the South Kingstown town line as recommended by both in Narragansett and South Kingstown waterfront advisory committees. We can follow up with any technical questions that you might have a little bit later on. The next section is actually 4-8. It's a language change that would add an additional restriction to the water skiing limitation, would actually add a restriction to swimming. Basically, it reads Section 4-8, water skiing, swimming, and personal water craft. This limitation would prohibit in all designated channels, fairways, and mooring areas within the town of South Kingstown, the activity of swimming. In general, in the channels and fairways, it's already prohibited for the most part. The key change in this particular clause is in designated mooring fields. We have, the town has actually nine designated fields at this point. Four of them are in lower Point Judith Pond. Two are in Potter's Pond area and three of them are in the Green Hill area. So that would just be within the GPS designated mooring field area. And, you know, our understanding of that particular restriction is the fact that from in the southern part of the country, there were a number of tragic deaths of people who were swimming in and around boats that had generators operating in areas where there were a large number of people actually living aboard their boats. And carbon monoxide is heavier than air. It sits on the water surface. Basically, the vents, similar to a car exhaust vent, vents out from the side or the back of the boat, those gases were in the area sitting on the water level. People would pass out and they would drown. So that regulation purely targeting public safety has finally made its way. You know, we find very few. It's clearly transitional. You know, in the South, they could live on their boat year round. Where here, you're only finding yourself, people are coming in, they may be on their boat for a short time. But I don't think we still find too many people who are actually living onboard in Point Judith Pond during the summer season. Under Section 4.8, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. The next one's actually Section 4.9-4. It's a new subsection that's adding to require proper maintenance and operation of sanitary facility pumpouts to mitigate potential pollution to town water bodies. There are a series of regulations in the existing boats and waterways ordinance as well as the harbor management plan regulating pumpout facilities. It's a very active area within the regulatory scheme of things, and this is just an additional node to bring our local ordinance in line with the state regulations. Under Section 4-13.4, it's a new subsection adding to ensure that vessels stay within their designated mooring fields. This language is being added just to comply with the CRMC guidelines for the development of municipal harbor management plans as revised July 13th, 2009. And this is really, our understanding is that annually, as moorings are reset, we need to maintain those perimeter lines of the individual mooring fields. Based on the size of the boats, the boats do swing. So it's really a maintenance of the mooring fields to ensure that all the designated moorings are staying within that particular field. Section 4-3611 is revised language to allow a one-time mooring license transfer to an immediate family member. These revisions are being recommended for compliance with the CRMC guidelines. The existing regulations that we have do not allow for any transfer. So each applicant is an individual applicant. This guideline would allow for one transfer. And let me just read through it. I think it's fairly self-explanatory. "A mooring licensee is not transferable to a new owner except by the process contained in Section 4-36. Notwithstanding this provision, a private mooring may transfer to an immediate family member, brother, sister, mother, father, spouse, children, or grandchildren, on a one-time basis upon written notice to the harbor master, which shall include the name and address change. The immediate family member to whom the mooring license is transferred is prohibited from subsequently transferring that private mooring license under any circumstance. All private mooring licensees that are forfeited by or not renewed by the transferee shall be made available to individuals on the waiting list." You know, our belief is that when times were better than they are today and there was significant demand for not only boat slips at marinas but also moorings, that it was very, it was, there was really too much demand. And so at this particular point, and that many of the communities throughout Rhode Island did not allow for such transfers because there was so much demand. So coastal regulations are now requiring that each of the communities in Rhode Island allow for a minimum of a one-time transfer to an immediate family member. And the responsibility of managing that process, as noted, would fall on the harbor master in each community to manage it from that point forward. The next section is 4-36, Sections 17 and 18. "New subsections to prohibit sighting of moored fields that interfere with access to designated shellfish management areas, traditional fishing grounds, and/or public recreational conservation areas, or cause significant adverse impacts to shellfish resources, wetlands, submerged aquatic vegetation, and/or important aquatic habitats. It is noted that the existing nine designated town mooring fields are compliant with these provisions and would not need to be relocated or reconfigured." There are many feels, once this regulation was instituted, that throughout the state of Rhode Island had to be reconfigured, relocated. And as aquatic aquaculture development and as our local environment changes, at some point, you may, at some point in the future, see the designated areas need to be adjusted. And actually, in the future, we've already been made aware that there is one such adjustment that we will need to be made because residential dock structures originally were allowed to protrude into a designated area. They're no longer allowed. So the harbor master will be working this summer to readjust the GPS signal, particular waypoints of the GI, of the designated mooring fields to be able to update that information. So we could see that happening at some point in the future. The town also has the ability at some point to entertain the creation of a new mooring field. And if we were to do something along those lines, expand or create a new one, we would have to go through this vetting process to ensure that we're not impacting any of the particular environmental criteria that's been established. The last item is Section 4-37. And this is a new section added to include provisions for licensing and regulatory outhauls within town tidal waters. An outhaul, which I don't, it took me some time to get my hands around, it's not a term you hear very often. It's an older structure, probably before moorings were used widely. If you're a waterfront property owner and you do not have an existing residential dock, you are allowed to have one outhaul, which basically is a post in the water with a pulley system to the shoreline. Traditionally been used for very small boats to be able to get you out. It's a way to avoid the cost of installing your own residential dock structure. In South Kingstown, we have, we're still, the staff are presently researching this throughout all of the South Kingstown waters, including Narrow River, which we believe there are a few there. There are a few in Point Judith Pond as well. So we think we're less than 10. What you have before you tonight is just a recommendation to adopt the core language as provided by CRMC. It is, this language and this new regulation actually gives the town the ability to set up a fee structure for management of the outhaul similar to that of moorings. But that's not being recommended tonight. I think we think it's a little too premature. We need to learn a little bit more about how old outhauls are being used in the pond, what kind of demand there is. We're going to start to create that list. We'll interact with the property owners. And really, this is more based on public safety, similar to that of a mooring, just to ensure that the tackle being used is of an appropriate size and type to be able to handle the vessel that they're putting on the outhaul. So this is going to be a very slow process, but there is no fee structure or further management structure associated with the adoption of that particular section. That pretty much makes up the core of the recommended changes. I'm sure there's probably some questions on individual sections. And I'd like to ask Barry to come up and between Barry and I, I think we can, I'm sure we can address any questions or concerns that you might have.
Questions here at the table? Jim?
I'll just throw one at you, Andy. The transfer 4-3611. So if granddad lives to 95, passes it to his great-grandson, lives to 95, so I've got 190 years in one family. That's nuts. I could go one generation down, grandfather to son, but to be able to pass it down three or four times, I think that's exceptional with a place where we have so much demand for moorings.
Well, it's a one-time transfer. So within that family, that particular mooring can only be transferred at one time.
I'm just saying, it should be one generation down. But if you have a grandfather giving it to a great-grandson just born, you know, granddaddy's had it for 95 years. You see the numbers?
I do, but the individual who actually is being transferred to has to be a boat owner, actually, has to be able to register.
All right. So his son's 21, so he, I mean, please. So it could be 160 years, could be 190 years in one family. So I guess I can't go with that.
Yeah. I mean, this regulation's really being implemented on a statewide basis. And previous, as noted previously, the town did.
Why are we addressing that then if we have no, you know, that question was asked at the work session, if we have no say in this?
Well, it's important that we codify the boats and waterways, the harbor management plan updates through CRMC through our own boats and waterways ordinance. So it's really an unfortunate situation that you're not able to avoid, but one that we actually, I think Barry can speak to it, we really have had very few requests over the years for transfers. And, you know, I'm not sure that we're, hopefully, that won't be a problem for us, but because we still have space, although we have a number of people on our waiting list, we still have open space in virtually every mooring field that we have at this particular point. Barry, I don't know if you wanted to add to that?
What would you say then, what do we knock off every year off the waiting list then? 10, five of 10 each year? Has there been a number?
Not really. I mean, as I mentioned earlier, it was about 78 on the waiting list as of this morning when I checked. But that's a very deceiving figure. It's all based on an individual's ability at the time they receive notification, whether they own a boat or maybe they put it on years before and they thought they were going to get one earlier. Many of them have to go out and buy, purchase a boat. It's also based on location of the given field and how they can access their boats on the moorings.
Appreciate that. How many moorings do we have right now and how many were given up in this past year?
We have approximately 138 moorings. Those are not all in Point Judith Pond. Those are in all the tidal waters of South Kingstown. I think last year, we issued approximately 12, I think it was.
12 new?
Right. I mean, I had, I sent out a list of 40 notices for people who might like, who were on the waiting list, and we cleared 40 names off the list. But there were only 12 that actually came forward and said either they'd been on the waiting list so long or they no longer had a boat or weren't interested in going where we had availability.
But of the 138, 12 gave up their rights to a mooring.
At some point over the previous year, yes. 12 new ones were issued. Okay, we have 138.
Right.
So.
I think we're saying the same thing. There were 12 vacancies.
There were 12, right.
That's my first one, Ella. So if someone else would like to?
Carol?
Barry, the swimming situation, I mean, what is, that word was added, swimming. Is that, am I correct on that?
Correct.
That's a new word. So water skiing and swimming is prohibited in all designated channels, fairways, and mooring areas within the town of South Kingstown. I can understand channels and I'm understanding right now that fairways are something other than golf courses, but I guess they're drive-throughs in the water somewhere. But on moorings, I mean, typically, you do see people that have gone out to their sailboat and it's, they're watching the sunset and the kids might jump in the water. I mean, I really hate to see you driving around, you know, issuing violations for swimming.
Sure. The main concern, as Andy said, was probably generated from the Southwest where they've had numerous deaths due to the carbon monoxide issue. But there's also the issue of boats, just like the mariner operators don't allow swimming around their docks.
Right.
There's no law that says you can't swim around a dock and, you know, everyone would, had a private dock would say, oh, that's ridiculous. But if you have a marina with a concentration of boats, you have boats coming and going all the time. And I think that's part of their concern, too. People transiting the mooring area, not being able to see a little soccer ball shape in the water that somebody's head and accidentally he runs over someone or injures them that way. I mean, you had the issue.
Well, that would be awful. I mean, obviously.
And I think that, I think that was part of the impetus.
Have we had any problems like that in South Kingstown?
We don't have that many vessels where I've actually seen anyone swimming off of them. We do sometimes in between the islands in an anchorage area.
Right.
But South Kingstown is not a destination port. South Kingstown is an origination port. So people go out to their boats, get on them, and go someplace else. Come back, tie their boat up, and go home.
So to make it clear, just so everybody knows, I mean, you can still go out and anchor your boat out near the islands or you can hook up two or three big boats like they do and they cook out and all of that.
It's not, it's not, it's not regulated under this portion of the ordinance.
And they can still swim there? I mean.
That's an anchorage, that's not a mooring field.
But in the, in these mooring areas, they're not that crowded to begin with, are they? I mean, I've never noticed a really crowded mooring area out in the pond anywhere, but I can't say that a moorings out there.
They are as far as the number of moorings we have. Our problem historically is, you know, whether the boats are out there with the economy the way it's been and things like that. We have one major area that has like 33 moorings in it. But for the last couple of years, you've been lucky to see six or seven boats out there.
Wow.
Okay? The people just haven't put their boats in the water. They are allowed for a year to maintain that mooring as long as they pay for their fee and then the next year, they need to put their boat back on the mooring. year, they need to put their boat back on the mooring. So, that's part of the regulation issue that I have, and, you know, some of the work that I have to do out there. But that's why you don't see it. There is a concentration over there of 33-some moorings in the B mooring field. The A mooring field at the top of the pond, yes, it's basically full, which just runs up the side of the channel.
You probably wouldn't see people swimming up there anyway, in the A field. I mean, I don't know. I just hate to like regulate this kind of thing, like you can't swim off your boat on a mooring. I can understand what you're saying about a slip. But the other thing is these outhauls, I mean, we're talking about a clothesline, we're going to try and regulate a clothesline, a pulley. It just seems ridiculous.
As Andy said, the issue began in Little Compton about eight years ago. And they just have, I mean, they're, they're wall-to-wall outhauls.
Really?
And that was brought before-
They have them on Prudence Island, I see.
And that was brought before CRMC. It took several years to work through the system, and originally, it wasn't even regulated by CRMC. And then CRMC said, well, we need to put in a regulation because there's such an issue here, and form some basic guidelines so that the cities and towns can either regulate them if they choose to, have the ability to regulate them, because there was no ability previously. And all this is, is CRMC saying, now that you're redoing your harbor management plan, we want to give you the authority to regulate them. Doesn't say you have to, but it says we want to give you the authority to regulate them.
Right.
After you've done the study in your area to see what requirements you might-
And they're only for people on the waterfront. Those are the only people who can have such a thing.
They're for waterfront property owners, they're the only ones that can have them, yes.
And we're choosing to just, are we going to regulate it? That's what I'm not clear about.
We preempted CRMC originally, before this even came out, and said that the harbor master could regulate the moorings, and that they were authorized as long as they didn't impede the navigation of the waters. Okay? And we've had that in place for probably six years now.
And that's-
And that's worked fine, and this is just-
For the outhauls or for the moorings?
Outhauls. And this is just, this is just a little bit more defined language that gives us a little bit more defined authority and the ability, if at some point in the future, it comes to the level where the regulation requires a fee, similar to the mooring fees, then the town has the authority to implement them, if they so choose. And that's up to you guys, because that's the way it's written.
So, are you comfortable with this, Barry?
Yes.
All these new regulations? Because I mean, you're, that, this is more work on your part, wouldn't you say, to enforce all of this?
It is, but it's all geared towards the public safety. Just, the history, the brief history of it is, and real brief, is that there's, there's an issue called public trust doctrine, where all the water below the high watermark belongs to every resident in the state of Rhode Island. And it's managed by the state of Rhode Island through CRMC. And then we get our authority to, I mean, they let us go out there and do the moorings and do things like that. And what I mainly tell most people is, the reason we have a licensing fee for that mooring is because whoever has that mooring is taking up part of the rest of the state's ability to use that area. So, it's sort of a give and take. You know, people love to have the water out there in the area.
I can understand the mooring regulation and the fee. I'm still concerned with the swimming aspect off of a mooring, depending on, like, it depends on where you are in some instances. And I think, we said it at the work session, Steve might have said it, it's a broad brush that's being painted on this whole thing. And there are some, some towns that have very crowded mooring areas and others that don't, and it seems a little bit of overkill.
And basically, you can look at it as, this gives me the authority to maintain a public safety issue through education. In other words, if this, if this is here, it doesn't mean I have to go issue a ticket just because I see this happening. It means I can use, and the town of South Kingstown's whole focus has always been enforcement through education.
Mm-hmm.
If I go out there and tell somebody, you can't swim here, and here's why, you know, because we're afraid somebody might get run over.
Right.
It gives me the opportunity to make the connection with the individual boater, advise them of what the actual issues are, and then hope they take that to heart and, you know, comply.
So, what would be the, what would be the penalty for swimming off your mooring?
It's under the documented fee section and 4.8-1, it's a $50 fine. Now, now, in South Kingstown, we have a three-layered enforcement. We have, we have boating safety checks, where we check and make sure they have their equipment and they're doing things right. Then we have a warning system, which we gather their data and issue a warning and say, gee, you know, you really need to do this, which is, is correct, and why. It gives us a chance to interact with them and tell them what they need to do and why they need to do it. And then we have the ability to issue a fine if they don't comply with that. And I can just say, historically, through direction of the manager and things like that, you know, we've always angled towards the education. My personal policy was, unless it was a grievous violation, everybody deserves to get a warning first. And if you go through our stats, and we keep copies of everything that we do in the police department's computer system, there's probably not two repeat violators in any season out of a, I think, the last numbers we had were like 480 contacts over the summer. There might have been two repeat violators, maybe.
Well, that's good.
So, the education works. This just gives us the ability to have the law behind us that we can educate with, and the reason to interact with the public.
Sure. Now, the, I guess this would be for Mike or Steve. The violations which are applicable to all of these, you know, the violation schedule, I guess that's what I want to talk about. Is that, can we amend that at all, or is that, is that in stone? Who came up with, is that something that's been ongoing? I mean, I just don't think swimming should be a $50 fine, unless it's in the middle of the channel, maybe?
That was originally, when the original harbor management plan went into place in 1994, they dictated, as they are now, that the boats and waterways ordinance be part of, be joined into the boats, to the harbor management plan. At that time, the state of Rhode Island, under a separate section of the general laws, allows each city and town to collect up to a $100 fine. So, at that time, looking at minor violations versus major violations, most of the violations were set at $50, and then the three or four major violations were set at $100. Now, that was back in 1994. I mean, I don't know, a parking ticket nowadays is worth-
Yeah, I think there's been very little movement on the amount of the fines over many, many years. Yeah.
None, Barry? Yeah, okay. Thank you. That was my question. No. Are there more questions? Sure, Jim. I have a question, but I'll hold.
Whoever else has an ask.
I'm just going to point something out to Carol here. Go ahead, Jim. Do you have a question, Polly or Kathy?
No, I'm fine with it. It makes great sense to me. I think to bring up to code is a good idea, always.
I ran across deeds that talk about mooring rights. Was that a fallacy? Are there no mooring rights for individual homes, and that the town controls all moorings in any navigable waters or any waters? Would that matter?
The town, through the harbor management plan, was tasked with managing all the moorings in their waters. Okay? And to accomplish that, the town of South Kingstown, back when they, they did the original study and had the groups together for the establishment of the first harbor management plan, placed in the ordinance the fact that a waterfront property holder had the right to one mooring within a reasonable proximity of his property. That was to, you know, acknowledge the water rights of the individual property owner without putting, say, two or four moorings out in front of the, you know, you could see every piece of property out there with four moorings in front of it, it would get kind of crowded. So, they basically said, and the way the ordinance has been to this point, that a property owner has the right to a mooring within reasonable proximity of his property. Unfortunately, as time has gone on, CRMC has looked to the point where they're saying, we'd rather have all the moorings in a defined mooring field. And they're looking to have us over the next years, whatever, as moorings expire, to any new applications to be moved them into a mooring field so they can be properly regulated, so that they're not impinging, as you say, on shell fishing areas, recreational fishing, sensitive seagrass areas.
Are there some homeowners who have docks and moorings? I'm thinking of like Jerry Brown Farm. Looks like they have, most folks have a share of a dock and seem to have moorings out there. So, how does that play into this?
Jerry Brown Farm Cove was established as a mooring area. Okay? That is mooring area D, and it was established there because there were so many boats already in there. They weren't going to have a negative effect on shell fishing or anything else as to where they were positioned. Jerry Brown Farm, those are all community docks. They're not an individual owner that owns each dock, because that's all leased property down there. So, we do have non-Jerry Brown farmer boats in that area, if they have the ability to get access to their boat, you know, from a local marina or something like that. But there are, there are boats, that's not an exclusive mooring area for Jerry Brown Farm, but it is a designated area for the town of South Kingstown.
I mean, I certainly know there are mooring holders and dock right holders down there. So, you're certainly, it's like having two moorings. You know, so if you have a dock, you can also have a mooring. And I don't care whether it's a share of a dock or not, whether it's leased land or not. I don't think that should make a difference. So, you have a right to both a dock, share of a dock, and a mooring?
The way the town and the ordinance is written, it says, a property owner can have a mooring. So, the Jerry Brown Farm Association may have a mooring.
Would it be grandfathered in, or that they would have more, or do you have to bring these-
No. Each individual mooring out there is, the mooring itself is licensed to the boat. Okay? It's not licensed to the property, it's licensed to the boat.
How many moorings in that Jerry Brown Farm field? And then the second part, obviously, would be-
About 28, I believe.
How many?
I believe there's, there might be 28 there, right off the top of my head.
And how many of those might be held by the leaseholders at Jerry Brown Farm?
I'd have to look at the printout for the addresses for the individuals, because the majority of the time, we require the mailing address for the individual, which isn't necessarily in Jerry Brown Farm. There are seasonal homes there. So, I mean, it would take a little bit of research to give you that information. But, say, off the top of my head, probably 22 out of the 28 may live there. That's just an estimate, though, Jim.
More questions, but-
Are there questions here at the table?
Yeah. One more, Ella, if I could.
Go ahead, Jim.
Barry, if I had a 50-foot boat, many, many tons, in the harbor at five knots versus a, let's say, whaler or a flat-bottomed boat with a small outboard, do I, and I don't know this answer, do I create the same wake?
You do not.
So?
The reason, the ordinance is written as it is, it is five miles an hour and/or no wake.
Thank you. I do that. I know you get around that. But, but without doubt, there's a huge difference between the wake that's generated.
There is.
Okay. All right.
Are there questions here at the table?
Ooh, one more. Is the public allowed to use private facility pumpouts, like a public boat coming in to use a snug harbor, private pumpouts? Or do we have enough public areas for public facilities and public boats to tie up and do their pumpouts? Are there any rules?
The public, the public is able to use whichever pumpouts they wish to. Some of the private pumpouts charge a fee if you are a transient. Some of the private pumpouts provide that pumpout at no fee for their either dock customers or gas customers. Basically, it's treated as an environmentally friendly, public relations item, I would say. And any money that any of the private companies are trying to recover for it are just to cover the disposal of the waste, because, I mean, I take Point Judith Marina, they have no public sewers down there, so there's no way to dispose of it. So, they have to have it hauled away. So, there's a fee attached to that. So, what they're looking at is just trying to get someone to, you know, sort of help out a little bit as far as what it's costing them to dispose of it.
What, can you give me an idea of the gallonages of those holding tanks and some of those marinas? How much can they hold, and how often? A gentleman behind you, I think, might be able to answer that. Andy?
No.
About Ram Point and Stone Cove, also?
Yeah. Mr. Don Vivenzio?
I manage Point Judith Marina. We have the capacity of holding 8,000 gallons of sewage, which we have to have pumped out by the town. And we empty that twice a year. Out of that, we collect about $50 in fees. Everybody else gets it for free.
$50 for each boat, or just 15?
No, $50 total for the year. It costs me about $5,000 to get rid of it.
Yow. Wait a minute. That's why I asked the question.
Yes. We do it for free.
So, no reimbursement to you for that?
Just $50. And those are people that don't buy anything from me.
Thank you.
So, if you come into the fuel dock, we specifically move the pumpout down to the end of the fuel docks, it would be easier. And anybody that comes in, transit or regular customer, they buy 20 gallons of gas and they get a free pumpout. My regular customers have free pumpouts all the time.
20 gallons of gas and-
They get it free.
They ask your premium of the gas price over, when they get back to their mooring? I mean, back to their original-
I think, I think our fuel prices are pretty, pretty-
Pretty standard.
Standard, yes.
Wow. Well, it's, I hope it's a good tax write-off for you. But that's very expensive.
I didn't think of that.
Very expensive. Because that $5,000 for the two 8,000 removals or-
That's for the year, yes. Yes, sir.
Are there questions here at the table before I go to the public? Okay, I'm going to open up the microphone to the public if anybody has any questions or comments. This is the purpose, it's a public hearing. Bobby Traeger?
Good evening. Bob Traeger. Carol, I thought your mind was saying the words right off. You brought up quite a few things that, and I don't know whether you've got anywhere yet on, I mean, you're the voter. So, I hope, I hope you can get somewhere on it. I, you know, I understand, I've been, I've been down there for 30, I've been going there all my life since I was a little baby kid, but I've owned a business right there in the channel for 35 years. I've been up and down the pond hundreds of times. And I understand the need for regulations. But I believe that we should have the least regulations possible. And I believe that the world is going in some weird directions with this kind of thing, especially in this kind of a world that we're living in down here. Such as, one of the comments I think was made about docks, well, and the haul-out is a very interesting issue, that the clothesline issue. I think we should leave it alone. I mean, if somebody has a piece of property on the water, and obviously, if they use the kind of judgment where they put a line all the way across a channel or something, something has to be done. But if they don't, you know, everybody can't afford a dock. And I know what they cost, because I built quite a few of them. And that's building it myself. quite a few of them. And that's building it myself, I know what they cost, never mind about having somebody do it. And I, and I think we live in a community where people have moved in here in the last twenty, twenty-five years, that have the money to build not only docks, but they build them out of mahogany. You know, they've got the money and they can afford to do it, but some people can't. And I don't like to see people that can't hampered by anything unnecessarily. The swimming issue is critical in my mind. I, I think it's ridiculous to set, especially if there's, I didn't even know there were any fines. My stomach was boiling when I was listening to it, to be honest with you, it's boiling a little bit right now. Only be, it, it's, it's simplistic in a way, you know? I can understand, the harbor master has a tough job. The toughest thing is to keep things under control with the boats that shoot off these four, four-foot wakes right, right by marinas and things like that. They don't have any common sense whatsoever. And that's what the harbor master, its main function in my mind, but there's a lot of other things too. But I agree, let's not put swimming into his problem area. If somebody's crazy enough to jump in the wrong place, then, you know, I believe in the education, I wanna, I wanna focus on that. The, he mentioned that, and I agree with him a hundred percent. That is the main function. If you go by a, an area and you see four or five people swimming and five or six boats are running, the harbor master might stop and say, you know, you ought to be careful when you're in the water. When boats are running, carbon dioxide stays at the surface and, you know, around here, that is a rare, we have so much wind around here that it's a rare item that would ever happen around here. After ten-thirty, we get the southwest breeze coming off the ocean and, you know, that takes care of that. But at the same time, that is definitely an issue, if you're over in Galilee. I don't want to take a lot of time here, but I'm worried about, I'm just worried about this kind of, CRMC, just that name of CRMC also aggravates me, because of certain things that I'm going through right now down there, trying to get common sense things done, and you can't get anything done. All they, all they like to do is say no and make up, make new regulations. I don't know. Anyway, I hope you don't, I hope you can amend some of these things. And I would like to take, you know, other than speeding on the water, I like to take fines right out of the picture with, people have a right. Somebody mentioned, one of the, mentioned, Rhode Island has noted and known for its toleration of, and the public access to the water and the beach areas and everything. And I've watched that type of access disintegrate in weird ways. But we have to be protecting that and, and making it something that, not an aggravation to people, but, you know, you, like you say, educate people if they're doing something that's stupid. Somebody dies every year on the rocks on Narragansett, every year, somebody falls off the rocks. Why do they fall off the rocks? Because they don't know about the, the big three waves that come in on a storm, you know? It looks all right for a few minutes, and all of a sudden, bang, three big ones come in, and they're swept right off the rocks. Or they don't know about when a rock's a little black and wet, it's just like ice. You know, a lot of people don't know these things. Maybe, you know, signs and things like that, I think they have signs like that probably, I think, in some places to warn people about that. That's what we have, education is the key to so many problems that we have. And not fines, and not telling people what to do. It's one of the things, I listened to a lot of libertarian talk today, I was, I had about a half an hour, so I sat and listened. You know, it's one, one of the things I do agree with them on a hundred percent, and let's, let's preserve freedoms when they can be preserved, let's not restrict them. Okay, I could go on on this, please.
Thank you. Polly would like to respond?
Bob, I wonder if perhaps this has come about because now there are more boats and there are more people. And I think we have to have a few more rules and regulations. I don't think anyone finds them attractive, but I think it's necessary because we just have more people and more boats involved.
I think you're absolutely right, but I'm not sure about what we should do exactly about that. I don't think that, that, that reasoning, I know what you're saying, it makes sense, but we have to be very careful about things like that. Because more people, yeah, more people. We could talk about parking, I think you'll be talking about that before the end of the season a few times over here. We can talk about a lot of things. There are more people, more people need, want access, and they're not getting it. But the, the regulations just cannot be so restrictive that it, it takes the joy out of living. And I, I had a whole bunch of things, my mind runs in weird ways, and I apologize for my jumping around. But remember the bridge, and, you know, obviously, it's a safety issue for kids jumping off that bridge, obviously. You think they're still jumping off that bridge? How many, raise your hand if you think they're still jumping off that bridge. You're right, you got it, you guys know what's going on. So, I mean, how many fines do you want to give out?
That's a good question for the harbor master. Have we given out any fines for people jumping off the bridge?
We have not.
We have not?
I don't know. They actually get to see it more frequently.
Thank you.
I think it's important to kind of bring this back and to remember that this is just a framework that which the police department and the harbor patrol function under. I think, based on revenue that's been brought in from fines, which is virtually nonexistent, would speak, the actions of the harbor patrol would speak to the issue of it really being an educational program. And actually, many times, through that educational process, the fee structure can be a deterrent, not to everyone, but to some, to maybe take part in a dangerous activity. But very rarely has the harbor master or his staff ever actively and aggressively implemented and utilized that fee schedule really for, for other than egregious activity, you know, reckless activity on the waters.
And that, that would have been my comment. And I agree that we need to enjoy life and the water. But that's the way that I took it as. This is a framework put in place for a harbor master to go and at least have a dialogue when he sees an unsafe situation. So, so that's why I would have supported this tonight, Bobby. If these were not in place, I don't think that it would give him the authorization to at least go and have a conversation. I'm very pleased to hear that there's no, there's not been any fines that have been issued to that third step with all of, I think you said there was four-hundred-and-eighty. So I'm really pleased with that. And I think that it gives you the leverage that if you do see people, especially swimming off a boat, and we do have some people that do live on boats that may have generators, that you, gives you the leverage to go and have a conversation, because one life to me is too many. So that's why I would support this. But I don't think that we're gonna go overboard and start issuing a bunch of citations and violations.
Right. Just as an anecdotal example here, the first four years that we established this boating safety check and warnings and the violations check, we did not issue any. And as, the waterfront is a semi-closed community, it came forward that the word around the pond was that, well, okay, it's just the harbor master, all he's gonna do is give you a warning. So following that season, we did go out and I think we issued half a dozen tickets. As soon as we'd issued the first couple, the word was around that, yes, there is a fine attached, okay? We, we do need the authority of the fine and the ordinance behind us. Not that we need to abuse it, but we, we need that there for the cases that require it.
At this point, I'm gonna open it to further comments, questions from the public. Please come to the microphone.
Don Vivenzio again. I was mostly interested in the no-wake zone near the Snug Harbor area, and is, is, I don't want to expound on this too much, is that going to pass? Are we all in favor of that?
I, I think...
Or do I need to explain why I need to have it?
I don't think we have a problem with that one.
Okay, thank you.
But if you'd like to address it, please feel, yeah.
From, from a safety issue, it's, it's rather important. We do have a lot of large boats trying to speed up in that short area of space, they don't get anywhere much faster. They do create, create a hazard around the docks. And we do have a fuel dock there, and it becomes quite hazardous when, when the boats are rocking and rolling and people are trying to fuel. So I think it's rather important to slow those people down.
Thank you. Further comments, questions from the public?
I'm still concerned with this swimming thing. Is there any way we could not have a penalty attached? I mean, I just think it's going too far.
If you're going to have a regulation and you're going to require compliance, sometimes the only way to require compliance is the financial, the financial requirements on the, the individual.
Yeah, I understand that very well, but if we could word it so that the swimming was prohibited in the designated channels and fairways and leave it out of the mooring areas, I, I'm just, unless the, unless it's very clustered, I mean, it depends on how, how clustered those mooring areas are. I mean, some mooring areas are not. And I just can't see going up to a family that's sitting there on their sailboat watching the sun go down and saying, "Get those kids out of the water." I don't know.
Polly?
I think when you consider our...
Oh, yeah, I, I'm sorry. I think when you consider our harbor manager and when you consider how he had no fines at all the first four years, it's not something we use a lot, but it's a tool that's important to have as far as the CRMC thinks. And if this is what they want, I think it's probably a fine thing to have. I don't think it's something that's gonna be used a lot in South Kingstown. And you, you, you look at the people who manage our problem, the police also. It's, it's done, I think, very gently and with great sense for if they see a family sitting out on a boat and a child jumping in, I doubt very much if they'll say anything. And you're probably right, Polly. I, I mean, I don't suggest that Barry would do that, but maybe it's a hazard of my occupation, that regulation, when it's enforced, can be overkill at times. And...
Yeah.
That's being a lawyer, and, you know, rules around the books, they can be enforced and...
And sure, that's what they're there for.
That's what they're there for, so...
And they're important to have them there.
And it's not just for the one harbor master we have now, they're supposed to live on beyond all of us, you know?
But we choose good harbor managers.
Oh, that we do.
Yes.
No doubt.
And I'm just gonna add another scenario to that, Carol. If indeed, there was a large yacht hooked up to the mooring and they did have a generator onboard, and there were kids swimming in the water, and without that regulation, compare it to a sailboat, you know, I still think that it gives the leverage for our harbor master to approach that boat for the safety of the children.
Well, we could speculate, and, I'm not speculate, we could, we could be, make the rule that specific. You know, it could be more specific.
I'm not sure that we have the ability to do that with CRMC, but Barry...
Steve, you can tell us.
Or our town solicitor, either one. Steve?
When you make rules, you want them to be understood. And I think that if you're going to try to provide those type of limitations, I think it's gonna be much more difficult for the harbor patrol individuals to be able to, to do the, do the enforcement. Again, I, I think, I don't want to be repetitive, but the major issue that we're dealing with on the harbor is education for public safety purpose. And if there isn't a problem from a, from a public safety purpose, we're really not involved with somebody who's swimming off of a, off of a mooring. If in fact, it's a busy day and there is a lot of traffic, that potentially somebody could get hurt, then I think that you want the regulation in place so that we can advise the people that it's not supposed to be happening. Now, you've got difficulties with the circumstances around you, please consider it. And if you can't consider it, then I have to enforce from a safety, if I think that there's a necessity as a public safety officer to enforce that, I can tell you, you can't do the swimming at this point. I think that's what our objective is.
Well, we could put, that first stage would be a warning, like absolutely, you know, you could, you could write that into the...
We don't have that in, in any part of our ordinance, but we only issue warnings. I mean, if, if you look at, at the, the citations that have been issued, I think in the last year, there were two citations that were issued for all of the harbor. We had, I think, over four hundred contacts with, with the public. So we are providing the warnings. We're not going to hit somebody with a fine simply because they've been found in violation, unless, if on the first day, we find you speeding with a boat, and we tell you, this isn't where you're, what you're supposed to be doing. And on the second date, they may be told, "Did you realize that you're speeding again?" On the third date, you may need to issue a citation to get that person's attention. But I can't write into the ordinance that the first time you're caught doing something wrong, we have to look the other way. What I have to do is to be able to have an ordinance that allows that, that peace officer to use proper judgment in terms of dealing with the situation. Our concern is the regulations need to be there if there's a public health and safety issue, not just for the individual, the perpetrator, but rather the general public that may be injured as a result of those, those actions. You know, it's, just as the question was asked about people jumping off the bridge, you put a regulation is, it says that they can't jump off the bridge. It's very difficult to enforce that unless we get a police officer down there for the complaint. So are there people still jumping off the bridge? The answer is yes. If there was a public safety issue and the officer saw it, he would tell them to cease and desist. That's what you're using the ordinance for.
You can do a warning, by the way. You could have first, first shot a warning, second shot a fine, you can do that.
If you want to codify that, you could. What I'm saying to you is that the practice has always been to provide the warning.
Okay, further comments from the public? Any further comments here at the table?
I just have one more question, that's for you, Steve. Funding, can you talk to me, talk to us about, you said if we didn't pass this regulation, we were, we'd be in danger of certain grants or funding from, could you explain that further?
The council has a harbor management plan. The harbor management plan's enforcement provision is the ordinance itself. You passed a harbor management plan that really had the various conditions that are in regulation consideration tonight. If you don't pass the ordinance amendments, then you're not in compliance with your harbor management plan. The harbor management plan has got to be approved by the CRMC. CRMC approved the harbor management plan and has, and has indicated the regulatory changes that are proposed to consideration tonight, bring your ordinance into compliance with the harbor management plan that they have to approve. If we're not in compliance with the harbor management plan, then there could be grants that come through CRMC that we would not be eligible for because we were not in full compliance with their regulations. And again, we're dealing with the public waters of the state of Rhode Island. While we consider them our waters, the state of Rhode Island has the ability and the legislative authority to provide the regulations that they are requiring within their water bodies. Our ordinances codify locally for our harbor management program what the state is requiring that we pass to enforce, so that there's uniformity, not just on Point Judith Pond or Narrow River or, or Green Hill Pond or Potter's Pond, but any place within the state of Rhode Island. The uniformity that they're looking for is that they would have the same type of rules and regulations for any boater, whether they were coming into our harbor, Newport, Bristol, or Barrington. That's what the objective is. What I said to you in the pre-session, and I truly believe, is that the problem with statewide regulations of this nature is that they are a broad brush so that they can be addressed both in Newport, which may have a much denser harbor use than a South Kingstown. As I mentioned, in Jamestown, Jamestown may have a very serious issue as far as the number of... Jamestown may have a very serious issue as far as the number of haulouts. And so they need to be able to deal with it. So what the state's doing is providing a general regulatory framework for the public waters of the state of Rhode Island. And they're saying to you as the town, you need to provide local enforcement of those uniform regulations regardless of whether you're in Bristol, Newport, or South Kingstown. And that's what we're attempting to do here this evening. I don't think that we have ever, nor do I think that on a tourist-based community, that we're looking to use punitive measures to get people to comply with regulations. We're looking for public relations and education, but at the same time, the bottom line is public safety. And so you mix those three together, you may end up with Judge Barry instead of Judge Judy, but I'm not sure which is worse. But I think that's what you're attempting to do, is to provide common sense. We're people, for the most part, are recreating.
Jim?
I agree with Steve. We're talking about public safety and education, and because of those words, which I take quite seriously, I cannot support this. I'll go right back to where he's talking about. This transfer part of this, that has nothing to do with public safety. And the other thing Coastal Resources ought to be doing is paying that gentleman and others who are providing that public service to non-slip owners or lessors of slips, doing that kind of a service. That's what Coastal Resources ought to be doing, is reimbursing that gentleman. So here, these are two areas where I think five reasonable people could make this, make sense out of this. But if you're telling me that this broad brush they're painting with is so wide, so broad, that we can't make those definitions or take them out, then I don't even know why we sit up here anymore. That's ridiculous.
All right.
So those two areas, Steve, are not education areas. I certainly can-
Let me deal with-
... with the 400 feet, the no wake, the gentleman talked about. I have friends with boats down there. I know how risky that gets with a wake. No question, that is a serious issue. But these other two issues I brought up really have nothing to do with safety and education.
Okay, but let me address your first question, the transfers. Under the current ordinance, if you look at Section 4-3611 in the redrafted ordinance, you'll see that the existing ordinance, if you decide not to act on the transfer, one available transfer in the family, if you decide to act on it and you leave the ordinance alone, the ordinance currently reads, "A mooring license is not transferable to a new owner." Period. So if your objective is to provide for transfers simply by not acting on the regulatory proposal that's there, instead of having the potential for one transfer, currently you have no zero, you have zero transfers that are available under the current ordinance.
But this council, could not the council address that at a later date, how we want the transfers to work?
I think that if you're uncomfortable with the transfers, then what I would suggest you do is to pass those sections of the ordinance that you're comfortable with. Let us go back to Coastal on the ones that you are not comfortable with and determine whether or not there's acceptable language that would still meet what their state requirements are. That's the best I could say to you. I'm not here to justify what Coastal has proposed. I'm only here to tell you that these are what we need to do to satisfy the existing staff comments that have been made. But I'm not going to let you think that by not dealing with the transfers tonight that you've solved the problem that you see, because you're not, because right now, there is no transfer.
But we know that, and I know how that reads, Steve, so thank you for telling me. I'm just telling you, these two items that I just brought up in here have nothing to do with public safety.
All right, Jim, which of the two? We have the 4-36, and what was the other one?
I don't think we have a choice, because I haven't been told that by Mr. O'Sullivan yet, if we have a choice to do anything other than what's presented in front of us tonight. That's where I'm confused.
Well, we can pass certain parts of this, I just heard Steve say, and we will request, you know, Microcell to speak. What was the second one that you had a problem with besides 4-36 with the transfers?
Oh, I thought that we should get rid of 494, when we have gentlemen like we just heard from tonight who are doing this absolute incredible public good, that somehow or another we ought to address that and see if we ought to get some opportunity for him to be reimbursed and other marina owners that take in a lot of that public discharge, or whatever they call it.
All right, 494, I don't even think was-
4-9, paragraph four on-
Vessel owners shall ensure that-
No, the new subsection added to require proper maintenance and operation of sanitary facility pumpouts to mitigate potential pollution town marine water bodies.
That's for the vessel owners, isn't it?
Yeah, that's actually on the vessel itself.
Vessel owners.
Yeah, it's not actually the marina owner.
That has nothing to do with the marinas.
That has nothing to do with us and our jurisdiction, at all.
So how do we know?
It says vessel owners, Jim, shall ensure that sanitary facility pumpouts on their vessels are operational, so that-
But they've got to deposit this stuff. What, so they just-
All right, but that doesn't, if you'd like to come back and explain it to Mr. O'Neill, it doesn't really-
Like to add some of the issues such as-
Right, it really doesn't have to do with the marina.
If we're talking about the vessels themselves and the sewage, the state does have a plan right now that the, many of the marinas partake in, and we inspect all the holding tanks and the sewage systems in each boat and put a sticker on them. So if we're looking at guaranteeing that the boats in this pond are regulated, they are by the state.
Are you reimbursed for that?
$35, 25 of which we, no, 10 of which we give to the state. Just with a decal.
Thank you.
All right, so are we clear about that? That piece does not deal with the marinas?
I'm just tired of being told that we just don't have the brain power to figure out what we need to do here.
So right now I hear you'd like to pull 4-36, Jim? Is that what I'm hearing? To bring back with more data?
I would like to pull 4-3611.
Okay. And the other one you're all set with? Because it doesn't affect the marinas?
Well, it does, as you just heard the gentleman speak to it. I'd love to add another section in there, bringing that up, about the marinas who are taking in that public sewage. I'd like to add something to this, which Coastal obviously doesn't care about, but we should care about.
Okay. Steve?
I'm having difficulty hearing. I'm trying to understand what it is that you want us to develop, Jim.
The overriding question is, can we do anything with this at all? Are we told by Coastal this or nothing? Is this what we're being told by them? And if that's not the case, then I just said I could not support it, because a couple of these things here were noneducational and non-safety issues. One was just corrected, but I could add another subtitle with how we should help marina owners who serve the public and not their own lessors, and I want the transfer thing taken out. I don't like that transfer thing. I don't like giving somebody a near in perpetuity use of a mooring.
If I could just open that piece for any dialogue here at the table, because I know that, I do believe that there may be some town council members that believe that it should be able to stay in the family and pass down for many, many years. So is there any dialogue here at the table with that one?
I just want to ask one question. What does it presently read? A mooring license is not transferable to a new owner when a boat is sold? Is that what it says? Because if you read-
I'm not sure why that's in red.
Why is that in red? Because that would mean just selling of a boat that you could transfer otherwise.
The way the ordinance was originally written was that a mooring will not be rented, leased, sold, or willed, so that, as Jim said, there was a definite termination of that. So once, if you sold your boat, you couldn't give it to your kids, you couldn't rent it to your neighbor.
But if you just gave your boat to your kid, you could give him the mooring. I mean, no? I mean, I'm just looking at when it says, "When a boat is sold." I don't have the rest of the wording that you're saying.
Right, and the way the ordinance is written is that the mooring is licensed to the vessel, and the vessel that it's licensed to has to be on the mooring. Okay.
So if a mooring is given to a child who's 21 and not being sold, it's the same vessel and it's still at the mooring?
That's right.
Right.
I think the idea was, if you're going to, if you're moving to Florida or you're selling your boat at that point, this would prohibit that. I mean, we just have to read these in a common sense way, too.
And there's different lenses to look at the verbiage here, so I just wanted, just wanted to bring that forward.
I don't have a problem with transferring the mooring. I think, why shouldn't you be able to do that?
I think it's fine.
I think it's fine. It gives an option, at least for it to be transferred where there was none before. I think this is pretty-
Keep it in the, and usually-
I'd like to see it transferred over and over again.
If you have the boat, Carol. I have the boat. But I think if often a child doesn't have the same burning interest in boats that the parent does.
Although-
But it's a nice opportunity. I think it's nice to have. And I think probably typically it would be a parent and a child. It wouldn't be, as Jim referred before, to the grandparent and the great-grandchild. So I think this is a nice opportunity. You have a favorite boat, you might have built the boat, so you pass it on to your child. The mooring on to your child. I think that's fine. So maybe we're all right with that.
Right, yeah.
Except for Jim.
I certainly have a problem with it if you have property that's on the water. As Barry said, basically that's like having a deed and right, that's one thing. But if you're in the public domain, I just think, either lottery systems afterwards, I think everyone should have a right at that. So it's much different than a landholder's right with waterfront property versus public domain. So I have a real problem with that. I won't prove it any which way.
You prefer it the way it's written now, Jim?
The way Steve wrote it, yes.
Yeah, okay. And maybe we don't agree with that? Maybe everyone else does.
Well, that's fine. No, I think the four of you are going to do what you're going to do, but I just cannot support that whatsoever.
And I'd like the swimming out of the mooring area. I want a lot of them to swim in the mooring areas, so.
I have no, I do not want to pull that out. That's, we've been through that. I think everybody has addressed it, Steve. I think Barry did a very good job about the swimming part of it. I'm ready to close the public hearing and move on and call the vote here.
So at this point, I'm going to go to legal opinion, and is it best that we vote on this, each section of this, rather than vote on the whole piece?
No, here's what I suggest. If a majority of the council wants to pull certain sections for further review and resubmission at a future date, then go at it that way as opposed to going through each and every section and voting separately. I mean, if there are one or two sections the council wants to pull, of course you have the right to pull them, and of course we can review it again with CRMC, and of course we can tweak the language. Any ordinance can be amended as you go forward. But I, you know, I think that's fine if it's one or two sections as opposed to everything.
On the mooring one that Jim wants, and on the swimming, the 4-8. And then I think we're in agreement on the rest of them, right?
I think we're in agreement on all of them, as far as I'm concerned. I wouldn't be for pulling anything. It makes sense to me, the way it's written.
Yeah, the swimming one with the educational in the framework, just to give them the authority to go have that conversation, I'm good with that because I know it's not going to be abused. So.
So the way I hear it, there are three who are supporting keeping the swimming on. I'm not sure where Jim is on that. So that would be, that would pass. And Jim's regulation to change the mooring issue, it sounds like four people are about keeping it the way it is, and that would be four to one. So really, this is going to pass as a whole. So there's no need to break it down separately.
Yeah, I don't disagree with the risk of tick.
I'd like to break it down on those two, because I want to go on the record that I'm for the majority of the ordinance.
Right, so what you should do is, once you close the meeting, then Carol and Jim can both move to hold a table, whatever section, see if there's then a second. If there's a second, you can have a vote to amend. If there is no second, then it doesn't get pulled. But you need to, if you're ready, you need to close the public hearing first.
I move to close the public hearing.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Okay, you know, I'm just going to throw my two cents here. I'm really hoping that we can all work together on this, and to me, it's not about a vote, you know, 4-1, 3-2. I'm really hoping that this town council can work together and respect one another's opinion to move forward with the betterment of the town. So with that said, if there is a motion, you know, I think I know how Polly's going to vote. I think everybody knows how I'm going to vote. I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I am concerned that we're not being respectful of two town council members with concerns that they have. But I will move forward.
And I respectfully request that you respect my right to say that I support it as written.
And I do support it, too.
Can I move that we pass the ordinance as it is written?
I second, Polly.
And I'm going to move to amend Section 4-8 to read, 4-812, excuse me. Water skiing and swimming is prohibited, water skiing is prohibited in all designated channels, fairways, and mooring areas within the town of South Kingstown, and swimming is prohibited in all designated channels and fairways in South, in the town of South Kingstown. That's what I would like it to read.
And I will second that.
So now you would have discussion on that amendment.
All right, but may I amend further then to take out my subsection?
You probably should do it one at a time.
Okay, okay.
Okay, could you just repeat that one more time, Carol? I don't know if Susan got that amendment to the motion.
Okay, I'm asking that we amend Section 4-812. Water skiing is prohibited in all designated channels, fairways, and mooring areas within the town of South Kingstown. And swimming is prohibited in all designated channels and fairways within the town of South Kingstown.
You are looking to remove that entire section or the swimming aspect?
No, I just want to allow them to swim in the mooring areas. That's, that's all I'm trying to say.
And the way you worded it would do that.
Yes.
Yes, okay, and I second that.
So let's have a dialogue about this. So how does that affect Barry? Barry? Did you just hear the amendment to the motion? How does that affect the public safety? Because that's really the main concern here, the public safety.
As Mr. Alfred said, it does sort of pull away our ability to have that conversation with someone who does not wish to have the conversation. And there are boaters out there that do not, lots of times, wish to have the conversation in reference to enforcement issues, whether we, and my personnel are all trained to address it on an educational level first. But there are, as in any community, people that don't wish to even listen to a educational conversation. And sometimes you need that portion of the ordinance in order to address the issue. And it all falls back to a liability issue for the town. That is, a town-regulated designated mooring area. And you know, if an issue happens there, that we have something that's just educational in reference to, and there are legal, steeper legal issues in other areas, then someone's going to take advantage of that and come forward and go, "Why aren't you complying with what everybody else is doing? Why wasn't your issue, you know, protecting the citizens of the town and the people that are in the area?" Because the majority of laws are designed to present, protect people against themselves. We don't just, they don't just willy-nilly put out legislation because they think, "Oh, it's a good idea." It's usually to protect life and property, and life is first. And that's what this issue is about, life.
That's why I'm going to support the public safety piece of it.
That's why I support it, too. Thank you, Barry, for reiterating what you had said earlier, and Steve for your recommendations on it, too. I'll take the harbor master and the town manager, and legal counsel, I think, chimed in a little bit there on that, too, as the reasons to support.
Further comments here at the table?
Yes, I would like to say that this in no way reflects that I do- Yes, I, I would like to say that this in no way reflects that I do not support public safety. And I have to say that you didn't convince me that swimming off your boat at a mooring is inherently dangerous. Maybe it is if they have these huge generators, but then maybe we could be that specific with it. But, you know, to suggest that I or Jim in any way are not supportive of public safety because I just want the word swimming changed in this ordinance, I think isn't, you know, it's unfair. It's unfair to me, so.
And I would echo that. I didn't like the question. I thought it was a setup and very unfair. Yes, I, I thought that.
Oh, I just wanted to engage dialogue, Jim. So my apologies if I've offended you. Yeah. So are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to vote on the First Amendment first, okay, which is to keep it exactly the way it is. Any further dialogue?
No, not to keep it. It's Carol's amendment you're voting on. An aye vote is to support Carol's amendment. A nay vote is to disagree.
What if I lost my chance to amend?
No, 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 no.
Oh, we're coming back to that, Jim. Okay, so the aye vote is to support Carol's amendment and the nay vote is to not support Carol's amendment. So we're ready to vote? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Council President Whaley?
Nay. And if I could just further elaborate that, again, it's a framework to keep the dialogue, to allow Barry to have the dialogue with any instances that he sees unsafe. So, and that's my nay vote.
Council Vice President McIntyre?
Yea.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Nay.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Nay.
Councilwoman O'Neil?
Aye.
Okay, so it's.
Three nays.
And two ayes. Okay. So.
So what I'd like to do then is amend the very first motion and strike section forty, excuse me, four dash thirty-six eleven out of this resolution, whatever you want to call it, amendment totally.
Right, Jim, as I understand that you want the original language to stand.
Original language to stand, but.
And, and you don't want to adopt the new underlying language. So what, it would just read, it's very simple. It says, "A mooring license is not transferable to a new owner when a boat is sold." That's what would remain in place.
Thank you. All right. That's the motion. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion here at the table.
As I've already stated, I, I don't, I think it's nice to be able to pass it down to a son or a daughter who might be interested in boating.
Polly, I don't, I don't think this, this stops that.
Having mooring.
Only if you sell the boat. Only if you sell the boat does it stop it.
Well, yes, but you can sell it to them, yeah.
But if you don't sell the boat, you could transfer the mooring.
Currently, it says no.
It doesn't.
It would have to go, you'd have to put it back.
It's not transferable to a new owner when a boat is sold.
Yeah. But I think you, you can do it to, you can sell it to your son or daughter, and they can take the mooring with them. Otherwise, it has to go back. You can't, other, if you sell it to lady Mae, it has to go back into the general pot, and she would have to apply for the mooring.
Right. And, and that's either way. If you sell it to a stranger, either, either one works out that way.
No, if you sell it to a stranger, the mooring doesn't go with it. If you sell it to a child or cousin or whatever, the mooring does go with it, with the sale.
In the, in the new ordinance.
In the new ordinance.
Right.
Yes. Okay.
And even, even if they sell the boat and the child has.
We just make sure that we clarify what we're saying here. The current ordinance says that if I have a boat on a mooring, I can't sell it to Michael and Michael takes over the mooring.
Right.
I can have a boat, and I can sell it and buy a new boat, and I can still keep it on that mooring.
Right.
It's the mooring that is tied to the boat that is licensed to the beginning of the mooring year. You could, the only thing this was preventing was for somebody to have a property value in a mooring so that when they sold the boat, they could say, "I'm selling you the boat and the mooring to go along with it," so it had value. That's the only thing that the ordinance did. The mooring can still be, if it's the father's boat and the son takes over paying for that mooring, as long as it's the same boat, it's, it still stays within the family. Correct me if I'm wrong, Barry.
I don't think it has to be the same boat though, Steve, when you transfer to a family.
It doesn't have to be the same boat. But again, the only thing that this was preventing in the past was to say that there was no property right to the mooring that you could sell to somebody so that they were buying your boat and buying your mooring at the same time. They could buy your boat, but they could not keep your mooring.
Mm-hmm.
So the language that we're talking about as far as allowing a quote, "transfer within the family," really doesn't deal with what that paragraph eleven was, was dealing with, which was making sure that there was no property equity in the mooring itself. So the language that the state was requiring was to say that they could transfer the mooring within the family. How that fits exactly into where paragraph eleven was, I'm not sure. I don't think, I, I think they're two different, I think they're two dissimilar things. I think that the paragraph eleven, not allowing the boat to be sold with a mooring, makes sense. And still should probably stay in there because there isn't equity in the mooring. It should go back to the, to the town at the end of it. But the, the issue with the family probably is a different paragraph altogether.
Well, but this.
And I don't think you needed it because you've always been able to transfer it within the family.
Because this new language does keep that prohibition transferring to a new owner. You still can't do that. So I still preserve some more concern about giving value to the mooring and getting more onto it.
And I certainly understand that. I don't disagree with Steve. My argument was, how many years in perpetuity here can one family own this? Number two, can someone move up to a sixteen-foot boat from a fifteen? Is that still following the rules and regs? Lease land? This should be a major discussion amongst us. I shouldn't be having to battle this. This is an issue that has a lot of three, four points. We got to get through on this.
That's why I said to you, Jim, if you want us to take the language back on that section, we can. If you're asking us to do something different with it, that's what I was trying to understand, is what you were looking to do different with it. That's all.
Just those three things. I asked to look differently, but I thought we had to vote on how this was presented to us tonight. And that's why I wanted that section taken out. But I'd love to address those three other issues. In perpetuity, public versus private, lease land, can you have docks? Can you also have moorings? I think that's a, that's a, that is a major discussion here.
So the question that I have, Steve, is this verbiage, you know, coming straight from CRMC, or is this verbiage that we've drafted?
Yeah, this, this is recommendation, boilerplate directly from CRMC, used on a statewide basis. That's correct.
Sure, I understand it. The only thing this does is allow the mooring to go with the boat if it is a family member.
Yes.
Thank you.
But it could be a different boat.
One time, one time basis.
One time only.
One time, and it was known before.
And that. And the son cannot pass it on to his son. Thank you.
That's the mooring. The boat could be anything in the world, kayak.
The boat's long gone.
Take the boat out. It's a mooring.
Mooring, it's the mooring.
The mooring, that's what it is.
Oh, no, but you said mooring and boat. Or you said mooring and boat, I'm sorry.
Yeah. That's true. Brother, sister, it goes, it allows for anybody.
You know, I, I would not.
About the mooring.
Right. And because of all of the dialogue here tonight, I mean, this verbiage, I think, has been interpreted many different ways. So is it reasonable to take this back to CRMC and see if there's, if it's not, could be clarified a little better? I don't know.
I guess we're still, or, or at least I'm trying to still understand what it is that you want to accomplish that isn't accomplished here. What I hear Jim saying is that, that, that he doesn't want, he wants the mooring returned to the town after the first generation, or?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
But isn't that what this is, is doing? That, that's what I'm trying to understand. I, I can go back to CRMC, but I need to understand what it is I'm doing different.
No, the new language is allowing you to give it to your family member. And that's what he does, one time.
Correct. The old language is, you're done when you're done.
Okay, and that's, and that's what you want?
Now, I wanted these three other things in there. My worry is that with this new language here, you can make this into a perpetuity lease.
No, you can't.
Number two, public waters versus private, deeded rights to the water versus who gets docks and moorings. I think this is a huge discussion. And this is a major part of our business down here.
That's not what we.
Is the number of moorings, which Barry brought up tonight.
I think it simply treats moorings.
Mike?
I think you're reading too much into it, Jim. I think you're going too far from what it, what it is. If you have that question, we can go back with it. But this is just, this is just dealing, this one-time change to, to pass it to a family member. You know, I, I think you start going, step one, you might have a point talking about if it goes to a great grandson, but it still has to be a boat owner, so let's go back. It can't be somebody that young. But to go on to the other two or three points, I think we're reading way too much into it. Stick to what's here. If you have a question, that's something that can be sent up to the Coastal Resources on, on those other points, but don't read into it, into what is going on right here. You spent way too much time on this.
I think we have learned with Coastal that if we send it up this way, it'll never be changed.
Again, you're reading too many other points into it. Let's stick with what is written here.
Well, staying with my motion, and if, if I have a second.
Too many, too many other things going on.
It's been seconded.
Has been seconded.
Carol seconded it.
Okay. I, I have no problem with it, you know, being passed on to a family member. I think that if you have those other concerns, Jim, I, I would like those to be further discussed at a later date. And maybe passed up to CRMC. I'm in agreement with that. So. Any further discussion here at the table? I'm going to open it to public comment.
No, no, we've already done. We closed the public hearing.
True, true.
To be clear, when, when you've closed the public meeting, you have the right to talk to your staff members, for sure, for Claire, et cetera. But if, if you want to reopen it to the public, you got to reopen the public meeting, so.
Any staff like to comment? Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, so.
You're on Jim's motion, so clarify what the nay and aye are.
Yeah, it's the same, same situation. An aye vote means you agree with Jim's motion to withdraw the language in part eleven. A nay vote is that you agree with the way it is presently written in the ordinance that's proposed.
Okay, are we ready to vote? And I'm just, right off the bat, going to ask for a roll call, if that's possible.
Okay. Council President Whaley?
Nay. And Jim, I encourage you to bring those other factors forward for discussion.
Won't bother, because it'll never be worked on. Please continue, sir.
Council Vice President McIntyre?
Nay.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Nay.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Nay.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Okay, we have four nays and one ayes, so the original gets passed.
Now we're going to vote for the.
Now, now you still have a motion on the floor, which is the main motion, which was to approve the ordinance as proposed. You have to have a vote on that.
Well, I moved it and you seconded that already, Polly.
Unless there are any other amendments.
Nope. Okay, any further discussion? Does everybody know what an aye vote is and what a nay vote is?
You better go over it.
It says, "To everything that hasn't been discussed in an amendment." Is that correct?
An aye vote would be to approve.
The rest of it.
Approve the ordinance as presented to you this evening with no changes. That's an aye vote.
Okay. And I'm going to, again, ask for a roll call vote.
Council President Whaley?
Aye.
Council Vice President McIntyre?
I'm going to say aye, but I think I already said nay to the swimming, I already, already made my point on the swimming thing, but apparently I didn't prevail. So as to the rest of it, I, I think it's a good ordinance.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Nay.
And I just want to compliment the town council for getting through this process. So thank you. Okay, so now we need, actually. Okay. And I'd like to thank Barry and Andy, and Mike and Steve for helping us get through that. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. Bobby Trigga.
I think you made a good decision, only because you have somebody at the helm that can execute it in a proper way. The danger I see is, and I have mentioning no names, and the person's no longer involved in it anymore, and it wasn't a member of this town. But there are different types of harbor masters. Trust me. Okay, I'm only going to say one thing. I'm going to, again, ask you to consider in your future plans to try to re-televise the town council meeting. I've talked to other people about this recently. Again, the internet is a little tiny blurb thing that, and it's not that well, it's not even a pleasant thing to look at. And I believe live presentation is where we should be. I don't know why Narragansett can afford it and you can't. Thank you. Bye.
Thanks, Bobby. And just for your information, we did get some information here at the table from Dale Holburner with fees, and so they're looking into. Thank you. Other comments from interested citizens. Okay, I just have a couple of comments. The, there were two breakfasts last Sunday that were outstanding. The Rotary Breakfast at South Kingston High School was just a great event. There was also the Snug Harbor Fire Department Breakfast last Sunday. And the Chamber sponsored, along with Domestic Resource Women, the Dancing with the Stars. It's absolutely a fantastic show. And one of the winners actually was, for the three o'clock show, was Captain Jeff Allen and his partner. So it was a real treat. And I just want to make note that Theater by the Sea, there is a fundraiser on this Thursday, well, actually, next Thursday, May nineteenth, for the Johnny Cakes Center. And then on this Saturday, we got, I think we all got an email from Daphne Brown with South County Habitat for Humanity. There's a groundbreaking event, Old North Village, Kingston, Rhode Island, at ten o'clock, Saturday, May fourteenth. So I don't know if there's any town council members that will be attending that. Ten o'clock. I'm going to pass it to you, Carol. And this Wednesday is the Kettle Pond Washington County Regional Planning. I don't know if somebody could attend. It's at eight-thirty at Kettle Pond. Is anybody available to attend that, to represent South Kingston Town Council? Carol? Kath?
No.
Jim?
No.
Okay. And then the last thing, so I'll notify them that we won't have anyone at this. And then the last thing is the birthday party at the South Kingston Dog Park. That's Sunday, May fifteenth, one o'clock till three o'clock. So it's already been a year. Hard to believe. Okay, so that's comments from interested citizens, which brings us to the town managers report.
Just a couple of, a couple of items. The council had tentatively looked at May sixteenth for a meeting on the Dougway Bridge status. I'd asked the council to delay that meeting into June. At the next council meeting, I'll give you a suggested date. We're looking at another alternative from the construction and the narrative and recommendation that was provided to the council back in, in February. I really will not have the research completed. I really will not have the research completed on that by May 16th, so I'd like to put that off till June. Secondly, the council earlier tonight confirmed a meeting date of May 17th, 7 o'clock, with the Economic Development Committee. Two other items, town construction projects. Liberty Lane from Route 2 will be closed this week, about 1,500 feet from Route 2, with a culvert construction that's going on. That road will be resurfaced, but the drainage improvements are going in this week, so there isn't through-traffic passage up 1,500 feet from the intersection with Route 2. Obviously, people needing to get to that other side need to come in through 138. Secondly, the road construction continues. Drainage improvements are being made now on Schoolhouse Road between Oliver Drive and Green Hill Beach Road. So, right now, that roadway has been churned up. It's down to a gravel surface. The drainage improvements are going in. Hopefully, the next step, which will be the installation of a liner before the gravel and asphalt is put down, will be beginning probably within the next week or so. We're hoping to have that entire project done before 4th of July. So there is going to be road detours there as we go forward with first the drainage improvements and then the road reconstruction itself. I'll answer any questions on the reports issued since the last meeting.
Any questions here at the table? Okay. Thank you, Steve. And Town Solicitors' Report. Any questions? Okay, we talked about a few appointments in our work session.
Yes, we're going to reappoint the four planning board members whose terms are expiring this month. That's Leslie Castro Valari, to serve for three years until May of 2014. Robert Clendenen, Clendenen, thank you. His term will expire May of 2014. Maria H. Mack, her term will expire May of 2014. And Fred Morrison, his term will expire May of 2014.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 500. We also talked about the Route 138 Reconstruction Project Area Committee. Yeah? All of them.
Yes, we'd like to reappoint several members of the Route 138 Reconstruction Project Area Committee. That's...
Dorold Beasley.
Dorold Beasley. His term would expire in May of 2013. Randall Carnahan, his term would expire in May of 2013. Gail Faris, her term would expire in May of 2013. Nevin Hanumara, his term would expire in May of 2013. David Heffron, his term would expire May of 2013. Diane Johnson, her term would expire May of 2013. And Peter Maynard, his term would expire May of 2013.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 500. Which brings us to New Business Item C. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Ocean State Transit, 348 West Main Road, Middleton, Rhode Island, for bus transportation services for fiscal year 2011-2012, with the option of a one-year extension in accordance with all bidding specifications and amount not to exceed $23,925, and as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated May 4th, 2011, and entitled Bid Recommendation Bus Transportation.
Recommendation is for the only bidder that submitted. It's also interesting to note that the price of the $62.50 an hour is less than what we've paid over the last two years, so, and plus, it starts at the first pickup and ends at the last drop-off. That's important for us because the company's out of Middletown.
Right. Any further questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve of New Business Item C.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 500. We also have a resolution authorizing the town assessed to utilize a tax exemption value of, and I guess that's $3,000 per vehicle in development of December 31st taxable property roll? What figure are we going to put in there? $3,000? Steve?
I provided the council throughout the budget process with the, really, two of the three options that would be available. Actually, there's any number of options that would be available. Current year was $500. I indicated to you that the tax rate based on the budget that was adopted by the council would either be at the rate of $14.30 or $14.52 if the increase in the exemption went from the $500 to the $3,000. There's been a great deal of discussion. Again, we're not changing the bottom line of the levy. What we're doing is adjusting the amount of money that would be levied through the motor vehicle excise tax. If we increase the exemption by $3,000 to $3,000, that $2,500 increase, it'll mean that we're taking $1,035,000 less automotive vehicles. That $1,035,000 would then come through the real estate and personal property tax. So when that happens, instead of being at $14.30, it would go to $14.54. I would say that based on roll updates, since we developed a budget, I'm now looking at the projected rates of $14.28 or $14.52. It still is that 24-cent differential. This is really a policy issue for the council, since it doesn't affect the levy, it affects the means in which the levy is established. I've also indicated to you in the past that the number of motor vehicles that we're dealing with, if we stay with the $500 per-vehicle exemption, we'll have taxes due from 28,805 vehicles. If it goes to the $3,000 level, we would reduce the amount of taxable vehicles, or vehicles that get taxed in town, by 3,800 vehicles, roughly, because there would be about 25,000 cars that would be on the roll. That's where that differential of the $1,030,000 goes to. So it's a council decision to make. I'd request the council fill in the blanks on the resolution this evening. There really is no staff recommendation because it's what the council wishes.
Okay, and I think we were on agreement with the $3,000. I'm not sure you are, Jim. So let's open this for, to a motion, then we can discuss it.
I move that we raise the tax exemption value from $500 to $3,000 per motor vehicle in the town.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Discussion?
It would be a maximum value of the $3,000.
Jim?
Yeah, I think the good part about this is that a lot of folks out there, less fortunate, might have older vehicles, they can escape that $500 extra dollars. That's the good news. The bad news is, it's just simply added to everybody else's and theirs to the real estate value. So the levy, as Steve said, remains the same. My issue is, this million dollars ought to be taken off of our gross budget that was approved here. And my reason for it is, we're looking at going on four years now. If I add it up, my memory's pretty good here. 2008, the school consolation, 2009, we're going to plan, 2010, long-term planning, now we're in reconfiguration, redistribution. Four years, and if you just took the, what the school committee said could be saved on Wakefield School, $550,000, $600,000. Four years, that's $2,202,000 to $2,400,000 that we have left on the table. And I'm just appalled that there was no discussion, that this budget, specifically the school budget, was rubber stamped. No questions, nothing. I'm upset because we've got people like the Chamber of Commerce that need more money to help more jobs, to bring more business to town. Unfortunately, we have the Johnny Cake Center, the Welcome House, who are also doing more business. They need more money. We're not helping them. The only people whose business is down is the school department. Ten straight years of fewer children in this school, every single year. Yet this sacred cow just keeps getting money on top of money on top of money. And you know the state pension problems come down to personnel costs. And I think by us not ordering the school department to either close that Curtis Corner School, or if they have to do it in another elementary, do it. But they should be doing it now, because what we have done by not discussing this and not pulling this together and pulling this budget down, we're allowing this to go forward next year. The nightmare next year for a budget is going to be awful. We've talked about it before, the new pension monies that are needed, accelerated education funding formula, no federal monies. It's going to be a nightmare, and you're letting the school committee get away with this by putting off the decision for another year. Taxpayers should not have to pay any more money here. We should have a $3,000 exemption. We should be taking a minimum $600,000 from the schools, or they should volunteer it. We're going to close this year. We've got a great surprise for you taxpayers. Money in the bank probably has to go to undesignated fund balance. That's what they should be doing. But just to rearrange the chairs on the Titanic here is, we have just screwed these taxpayers, and someday they're going to wake up and realize that how many years here we have let go by here without ordering the school committee to make tough decisions. And believe me, these decisions would not affect achievement, because there are lower and fewer class sizes coming along. All it is is proper facilities use, smart thing to do. And I'll just read you one quote here from the former chairman, Scott Miller, here in the paper. "As long as we have buildings we are not utilizing effectively, we will be hard-pressed to convince taxpayers we're good stewards of the tax money we are getting." Quote and unquote from Scott Miller. I'm just telling you what he's saying. Four years, how can we keep doing this? So we're going to add the automobile tax bill and just make it now a real estate tax increase. We're not doing our job, and to rubber stamp this budget, I'm just, I'm shocked, upset, and embarrassed. And the last meeting, I think, said it all. I don't think we had one member of the public in attendance. I am just, I am overwhelmed, absolutely overwhelmed. So that's why I'm voting against this tonight.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just get that straight, Jim. So you would have gone for the $500, the $6,000? Where would you fell? Just so we can get it on record.
I would go to six, well, right now, we're talking $3,000. That's $1,030,000, and I believe that is what the schools owe the taxpayers here for the three going on, four years, that have not made a decision on the facilities use.
And then your first statement was that the schools in the past four years, with Wakefield Elementary could have been $600,000, you came out to $2.2 to $2.4 million.
The numbers that were used, the numbers that were used, Kathy, by the school committee were $550,000 to $600,000 if Wakefield had been closed. I was simply putting the four years together, $2.2 million to $2.4.
Just trying to connect the dots on the past and other things that have been said from that side of the dais. Okay, just wanted to clarify that. So you're going to vote nothing then? So $6,000 is what you would want it to be? Or you would have gone for $500?
No, I wanted the $3,000, but not to be...
So you're just not going to vote anything at all? So you let us do the work?
Not for the increase of the real estate levy. I thought the $1,030,000 should be coming out of the school fund.
But you know we need to pass a budget, and we need to add this onto it, so we'll do the work. Okay. Okay, just want to get it clear, who's doing the work. Okay, thank you.
I think taxpayers should know that we have passed the buck, and the school committee's passed the buck. Again, this is not about achievement. This is about proper facility use. Very simple.
Let's do the work here. Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion? We have a second? Further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Posed.
Aye.
Abstention, motion carries 410. And last item on the agenda tonight is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Kay Electric Incorporated, 2546 Warwick Avenue, Warwick, Rhode Island, for installation of componentized, let's see, galvanized steel pole lighting system at Old Mountain Field Softball Field in accordance with all bid specifications, in an amount not to exceed $154,076, including a contingency, and as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated May 3rd, 2011, and entitled Bid Recommendation Old Mountain Field Lighting. Steve?
I think the council will recall, both in the 1011 year and the 1112 year capital budget, $30,000 each year was budgeted for the beginning of the replacement of the lights at the Old Mountain Field Softball Field. Last December, December 26th, there was a storm. Two of the poles that we were looking to replace were destroyed. They were knocked down during the storm. The town's insurance carrier reviewed and determined that the cost of replacing those two poles with wooden poles was $39,650. When we looked at the project, what I wanted to do is to do it once and do it right. Rather than replace wooden poles, I wanted to see what the cost would be for us to go with steel poles with interior electricity as well as underground wiring. This is the same type of poles and lighting that we've used on each of the other facilities that's outlined in Terry's memo. We then looked at what was available. The $60,000 is available through the capital fund associated directly with the project for the replacement of two of the poles. We'll have the $39,650 from the insurance trust for the settlement based on the two poles that were lost in December. We're also carrying a balance based on monies in the capital budget for Old Mountain Field paving, where we did not pave all the way through to the southern end of the property, because we're not going to open that gate up. So there's $34,906 that's available there. There's also about $20,000 in projects that have not been authorized that are associated with Old Mountain Field. $10,000 for skate park, another $10,000 for improvements to the restrooms that we would hold in abeyance to be able to do the entire project at once. It makes little sense for us to replace two poles at a time. If I put the six poles up now, do all the electrical work at the same time, do the underground, it's a better project, and it's one that will give us probably at least a 25-year warranty on the lights and the poles, as well as the upgrade on the electricity that's necessary. So I'm recommending that the council agreed to do the entire project at this time for the $154,076. The estimated cost at this point is $140,000, and we've used a 10% contingency for whatever field conditions we may run into. So I would support the recommendation as presented. We did look at the option of replacing four of the poles rather than all six, but for us to set the lighting properly with the old lights still going with the new lights, it made no sense. So do it once, do it right. This is the recommendation that you've got for you tonight.
And it'll be all done before 4th of July?
I beg your pardon?
Will it all be done before 4th of July fireworks?
Hopefully, we'll have the lights in before July 1st.
Kathy?
Steve, something just keeps sticking in the back of my mind. There was a news report a few, maybe a year ago, about these metal poles going down on people who were in, you know, attendance at, it seemed like it happened a lot in Texas, a lot of that Friday night lights-type thing, literally, falling. And I just wanted to know that if we've, you know, really looked into the structure of these metal poles, because it seemed like there was somebody who was having a real problem, they're having a real problem with a lot of providers. It was like a big thing how this has been happening across the country. So it was just a concern of mine, and that just keeps sticking in my head, that particular newscast, and I want to make sure, obviously, that that doesn't happen here.
I don't watch Saturday Night Lights, so I don't know.
Well, I don't watch it either. I don't watch it either. I'm just saying this happened, these poles went down in football stadium, injured people in stands, and then there was some question about the stability.
Warranty on the lights is 25 years.
It's just a question of the stability of the metal that was used in some of these, so I, just something that, Terry, you probably, I don't know if you're familiar with this at all.
Just a little background. The manufacturer of the poles is Musco Lighting, and the fields that currently have the Musco, they also have Musco lighting systems in town. This system actually requires a precast concrete base. town. This system actually requires a precast concrete base. I am unaware of any issues with this particular manufacturer, and in fact, this manufacturer is probably the top manufacturer in the country. They, they also installed lighting at Gillette Stadium. So, they're nationally known, have not, do not have any knowledge of any issues with Musco lighting in particular.
It ju, it just happened to be a report, and they would, it was quite surprising how many times this has happened with these metal poles around the country. You just don't, you know, hear about it here. Just something to, maybe just ask.
I think we can check with the, with both Musco and with Kay, who'll be doing the installation, and see if they're aware of any of those issues. But, we're not aware of it.
Just, just ask. You can't hurt to ask.
Yeah, definitely.
On that, I make a motion to approve New Business Item E.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 5, 0, 0. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.